And I will be your moderator tonight. I'm one of York City's communications consultants. Tonight, we are here to announce the three finalists for the city manager position and to give the citizens the opportunity to voice their opinions. The council members will not speak. This is an opportunity for you to speak. But before we start, let me introduce and ask the Chief of Police Connie Price to give us the ground rules for the evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. You have to go to the microphone so you can hear her online.
Good evening, everyone. Just simple grounds rules. Just be respectful. Everyone has their own opinion. No profanity, nothing derogatory. Just be respectful. Everyone has an opinion, whether you like it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Price. Let me give you a little bit of a... I apologize, Chief. Let me give you a little bit of what we're going to do this evening. First, we are going to announce the three finalists. Then we'll have Mr. Warren Hutchmacher from the recruitment firm Sumter Local Government Consulting talk about the process of hiring. Then we'll have the opportunity for people to speak. If you want to speak this evening, we have to do it a little bit differently. These are young ladies in the back. You can go in the back and sign up to speak. We will have an opportunity for everyone to speak, for people to speak. This meeting, though, will end at 6:30, so we will ask everyone, if you want to speak, please sign up now. With that, let me introduce the three finalists by name for the position of city manager of College Park. First, there is Dr. Emmanuel Adedarin, who is our interim city manager; Mr. Thomas Thomas, the former city manager for Compton, California; and Mr. James Woods, the former city administrator for Fort Valley, Georgia. And now with that, let me introduce Mr. Hutchmacher to talk about the hiring process.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Warren Hutchmacher. I am president of the Sumter Local Government Consulting, the firm that was hired last year or a year and a half ago, two years ago, to do the initial hiring for the city manager process and then also for the process that we're going through this year after Mr. Hawthorne left the city. And so, from my background standpoint, I'm a former city manager myself, so I've served as city manager in Avondale Estates, Norcross, Dunwoody, John's Creek, Georgia, and Hutto, Texas in 2021. We started our firm, which handles recruiting, staffing, and consulting only for local governments. So, pleasure to be here with y'all tonight and to be back working with the city of College Park. And so, from a process standpoint, each city manager recruitment that's done, whether it's our firm, other recruiting firms or cities, all have a very different approach that they take depending on the particular situation of the cities that you're working with and what their needs are at the time. And so, I had a lot of familiarity with the city from having done the previous city manager search and a number of other executive searches with the city for this particular search. So, from a process standpoint, the first thing we do is we put together recruitment brochure that explains about the community, what the assets and wonderful things about city of College Park are, what some of the key challenges and opportunities that candidates face in this particular job at this particular time in your history, lays out the benefits, what the salary expectations would be, more information about the position and the governance structure at the city, and then we go ahead and out to market. So, for this particular position, we advertised in three places. One was the Georgia Local Government Association, which is basically cities and counties in Georgia, and that's where all the municipal jobs are advertised online. We also did the International City Managers Association and the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. So, the advertising was done with those in mind. We then take in the resumes, and I'm blanking at this exact second. I'm going to look it up in a moment and let you know exactly how many applications we did receive. At that point, we'd take all of those resumes. We scored them based on the minimum qualifications. It's within the job description adopted by the city. We presented a report to the elected officials, letting them know who all the candidates are that applied for the position, what their resumes look like. And then we scored those into tiers based upon how they scored against those minimum qualifications. Then we then discussed that with the council. They make a decision to narrow the field at that point, and they chose to narrow the field down to three candidates. And then you can go through interview process. In this case, the first interviews that were held were with the elected officials in executive session over Zoom, and then they also additionally were interviewed individually by council members that were not involved in the initial conversations that they had with the candidates at the first interview. And then those interviews are to be discussed by the council members, and hopefully at some point they come to consensus on who they want to hire. We then do a background check at that point on the candidates that, or a candidate that they prefer to hire, so the criminal check, credit check, education verification, background reference check, and then a deep social media and internet search of the candidates. And we present that report back to the mayor and council, and then they're free to then take that information and make whatever decision they think is in the best interest of the community. And then we assist on the back end once they've made their selection and voted on it to be able to help with any media relations. So, those are the duties of our firm. But I think the key that I want to also pass along to you, one is that each search is unique for each community and how the elected officials want to go ahead and do that. Our search for it is a facilitator of the process, not the decision maker, so we don't cut any candidates. We don't choose any candidates. We'll make recommendations based on the criteria that the city sets, but ultimately, it's the elected officials that make those determinations as to which candidates to move forward in the process, what type of activities or interviews or schedule they wish to have for that process to make those decisions. So, there is no right or wrong way necessarily to do it. There's just different ways in each community. And so, I don't want to take up all of y'all's time speaking, but thank y'all for allowing me to be here tonight and to share the process with you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchmacher. Before we open up public comment, let me read our civility pledge. "The way we govern ourselves is often as important as the positions we take. Our collective decisions will be better when differing views have the opportunity to be fully vetted and considered. All people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy, and openness. We value all input. We commit to conduct ourselves at all times with civility and courtesy to each other." Okay, now let us open up for a public comment. Each person will have a three minutes to speak. Our clerk will run the clock for us. Speakers may yield their time to the next speaker or the speaker on the podium for an additional three-minute blocks. So, I will ask the first person to come up that signed in the back to have comment. Come to the podium.
Thank you for having a town hall tonight. I think this is a great opportunity. I just wish that it had been under different circumstances. First, I'd like to point out that I sent an email earlier this afternoon pointing out that the public has not been given the 14 days' notice required under the Open Meetings Act for the public to have an opportunity to inspect and review the candidates that are under consideration when it's down to three finalists. So, I would highly recommend that you not select a city manager tonight because doing so would be a direct violation of the Open Meetings Act. Happy to discuss my legal research on this with all of you if you have any questions. Second, I would like to point out that it doesn't seem like the city manager candidates have been able to meet with department heads, and it seems to me that if they are going to be managing them, that would be an important piece of information to see how they interact with them. I have some concerns about our interim city manager and how he has interacted with many of our employees, including allowing residents to harass the employees, including not sufficiently supervising and protecting the employees from political interference in their day-to-day jobs. So, I'm very concerned that he is one of our three finalists at this point, and I think the fact that he also declined to be interviewed by two of our elected officials is of serious concern and, in my opinion, should be disqualifying because it shows he is unwilling or unable to work with our elected officials, who will be in their positions for another three years. So, something to consider. I don't know if these are the only candidates. People have raised questions about two of the candidates and the way they were removed from their former positions. I think it would be helpful for the residents to have additional information about how that came to pass so that we could feel more comfortable with that. But I would encourage you all to think carefully about how you are proceeding with the process at a time when our residents have very little trust in our city government.
Next person.
I think this is very important. I've been in the city 45 years. I think I've seen in the last 45 years, I think, 11 to 12 city managers. Never ever have I ever seen have a town hall and get the citizens' input. So, I think that's great, what y'all are doing, but there's nowhere in the charter that it's required. So, I want to get that understood. It's not required to have that, but it's good to have it, good transparency and giving citizen opportunity. I support Dr. Adedarin, okay? He came in in a very tumultuous time, went through a lot, dealing with a lot of things going on, and been working with the employees and just changes and dealing with changes, new administration. So, I think it's very important that we stay with him, give him the opportunity. And best of my knowledge, all the council and the mayor had the opportunity, something the young lady said previously before me, they had the opportunity to interview all candidates at that time. That's the best of my knowledge. I wasn't there and was in executive session, but I thought they did when I saw them up here before they went into executive session. So, just like someone said earlier, I don't have a problem with the mayor, any other official, but I heard something the same people said, "Well, we voted her in, so deal with it." Okay, whoever the council chooses, then let's move on. Let's come together, rally behind them, let's support them. This gentleman just told you the procedure and the things that they go through to selecting the candidates. So, it's not some backdoor hidden agenda behind backdoors. All of us have an opinion. I respect that, and we have a right to support whoever we support. But please, don't demagogue someone because you don't care for them or you don't like their politics, but don't agree with them. So, I hope we have a good civility town hall. So, council, thank you for having this, and I hope you make the right decision, but I support Dr. Mani because I feel he's the right person for the job, so that's who I support. And also, very quickly, thank you, the Police Department of Public Safety, for coming out on 9/11, for all y'all's support that you gave us at the food distribution.
That is time.
So, thank you very much. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening to the mayor, council, and others in attendance. My name is Brenda Cunningham, and I do live in Ward 1. I appreciate you all for having this forum and giving us as citizens an opportunity to give input. And part of what I did before coming here, I looked up some of the duties, really, of a city manager, and that person is in a role of one of the highest-level positions in city government. That person also works very closely with the mayor, council, as well as the residents of College Park. So, with that said, I thought it was important to look at some of the duties, skill set, and responsibilities of that person and see how they will impact the community. One is that they oversee the operations of the city. They assist the city council. They execute policies. They oversee programs, manage budgets, they allocate resources. And in thinking about that, that's a great deal of responsibility and power. And what I'd like to see in the person that you decide to hire is someone who certainly has the citizens at the forefront of what decisions or what they might do as it relates to the community. We as citizens want to be listened to. We all want to be listened to. So, we would like to have someone who is a person to engage in some sort of way to hear our voices. We also are looking for someone who can talk with us about a specific process that he will use to engage us and to implement our concern for the community. I guess the other thing, and lastly, what I'd like to say is, we know that there are a number of issues facing College Park. We're looking for our city manager to be that person, to be the voice for the citizens, to listen to the council, and make a wise and fruitful impact.
Time.
Thank you.
Demetrius Taylor. Good evening, everyone. Hello, my name is Demetrius Taylor. I reside in Ward 2 of College Park. And thank you for this inaugural town hall that's about employee and employment opportunities here because this is something that we've never done in my 16 years as a resident here, where we have the citizens give input, direct input on a hiring process. I thought that that's why we have an HR department. I thought that's why we have you guys in place to make these decisions. Yes, the public input is necessary. You'd like to hear from us, but we're talking about hiring. That there is usually done in executive session, so to take this approach, hmm, okay, thank you. Okay. I heard the procedures that were taken, but I did not necessarily hear the rubric that you use to make sure each person are qualified. I hope that when you give the report to everyone, that the rubric is outlined because as many of us are here, we hear that our incumbent, Dr. Adedarin, made the cut, okay, which probably shocked everyone. Our lovely mayor here has made it a point that her contentiousness with him, she made it a point that she does not want him to serve permanently. So, for him to have made the cut of this draws eyebrows for everyone, and so now we're questioning what was the rubric used to make him make the cut. Also, we understand that you were also here when we had Stanley Hawthorne. And so, my question then, that I hope is explained in the report, for those people who applied previously with Dr. Stanley Hawthorne, were any of those people brought back and under this consideration? Did they apply? Did they make the cut or whatever? What was that? Because if Stanley made it last year and didn't last a year, I'm sure those who were after him, that were the top three or whatever that was, if they were available, I'm sure they would have applied. And if so, why didn't they make the cut this time or whatever the case may be? I understand that each city is different and each time is different, but I'm just wondering, did the rubric change or what was that for us? There was a comment made that we didn't have, that the candidates went away, didn't get a chance to speak with department heads. Well, Dr. Adedarin is the department head right now for many of the departments because we don't have department heads. So, they would have been speaking to the competition.
Time.
Thank you.
Our city's not posted the resumes of the candidates on our website. Resumes were obtained by citizens via the Freedom of Information Act. These and many other articles on city affairs are available on unitedcollegepark.com. Go there for unfiltered facts on our city and sign up for informative emails. Our city is beset with animosity and lack of communication between the mayor and not only the council, but the interim city manager, Doctor of Ministry Adedarin. If we wish to regain a minimally functional government, his selection will only add fuel to the fire. As of early this week, he has refused to interview with Mayor Motley Broom for this position. The other candidates have graciously accepted not a favorable sign for future congeniality. He's contributed along with the council to a work environment where our 16 core employees and contractors have been terminated or acquitted. He's in charge of the council agenda, and he fails to give city manager reports at council meetings. Again, you can see United College Park for an informative video. He is rarely available to directly answer questions, poised to him at council meetings and even on subjects well within his purview. His educational background is in subjects inapplicable to public government. His tenure at the city of Richmond, Virginia was not without controversy. Of the three resumes presented, Thomas Thomas has the most impressive. Thomas has a history of city management and government similar to complexity and larger in scale of College Park. His education also supports his position. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Shakita James. I reside off of Rugby. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight as you consider the important decision of selecting our next city manager. As this decision may already be made, I do hope that you consider my thoughts in feedback room today. I know this position carries immense responsibility, not only to the residents of College Park, but also to the city staff who worked tirelessly to serve our community. One of the key qualities I believe we need in a city manager is the ability to maintain independence and decision-making while ensuring that both the council and the residents are well-represented. It's important to have a leader who can balance these dynamics with transparency, courage, and a clear vision for the future, and I speak of this as a leader in healthcare institutions who makes these decisions about hiring as well. I also believe our next city manager should prioritize fiscal responsibility, infrastructure improvements, community engagement, economic growth, and public safety. Those are important to me, as I'm sure to others. These priorities will help ensure that our city continues to thrive, both in terms of the services provided to the residents and the overall quality of life. Equally important is the city manager's role in supporting city staff. Fostering a positive morale within departments, strong, empowered teams lead to better services and better outcomes for the community, and we need a manager who understands that motivated, well-supported staff is crucial for this city's success. As you finalize this decision tonight, I would encourage you to consider at the candidates these questions. How you build and maintain strong relationships with the city staff while ensuring independent and thoughtful decision-making that best serves the long-term needs of both the council, the residents, and the staff? What ideas do you have to engage the residents more actively and provide regular updates on city developments and decisions? These questions highlight the need for leadership that strengthens both internal operations and fosters open communication within the community, and I hope we can choose a city manager who is committed to fostering a supportive, innovative environment for city employees and making decisions that align with the best interests of College Park with these top priorities in mind. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are at our 6:30 mark, but we just started just a little late, so we will have one last speaker.
I have no others.
Therefore, ladies and gentlemen, the town hall is ended. Thank you so much for coming out this evening. Thank you.
Go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Is there a second?
We have all the members in order, and I'm here.
It's not a meeting.
Right over there before we call him in.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will have one more speaker. Since I did offer that opportunity, one gentleman would like to take that opportunity for three minutes.
Thank you, mayor and council, city officials, and thank you...
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Brother Stanley Mohammed.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
I've been a citizen in this city for, oh, since 1983, and I've seen many city officials, mayor, council, and from my vantage point, as a longtime citizen, this has been the best council that I have witnessed since I've been here. A council of freedom, justice, and equality for all, regardless of creed, class, or color, a council that listens to the people, and they have selected an excellent interim city manager in Dr. Emmanuel Adedarin. I would just caution the citizens who appear to have inordinate self-interest that you want someone who you can control not to obide by the rules and regulations of this city, which I have not seen Dr. Emmanuel Adedarin violate one personally. Emmanuel Enadarian violate one personally. But it seemed like this insidious force has a white supremacist background and a slave-master background, and all these, all these black people who love master, who actually, and Malcolm said, you throw a brick in a pack of dogs, only one barked, one got hit. And so here we are. We're seeing this insidious force crucifying black leadership, and that's the essence of it. But if they were white, and if they were white, you would not have the comments you are having today. And when we had a white sitting interim manager who had a lot of allegations, not one of you white person stood up against him. Not one white person stood up against Councilman Ambrose at that time. So you're really racist and hate black people. That's the essence of why you're complaining. So I support you. We love you. You keep up the good, you are derogatory. And so I pray to God that we stay, I pray to God, let me speak without you speaking openly, please. I pray to God that you make a decision that's rooted in what pleases God, because when you swear in, you swear in with your hand on the Bible, not with your hand on the Ku Klux Klan doctrine.
That is time.
Thank you very much.
We have a full quorum present. Or no, we do, do we? I'm not sure. Councilmember Gay stepped out. Is he, he's coming in? Okay. That was your chair. Do you want to sit here? We have a full quorum present with council members McKenzie, Karn, Arnold, and Gay. And so at 6:37, I'll call the meeting to order. At this time, I'll take a motion to enter into executive session for the discussion of personnel. Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Is there a second? Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. We will enter into executive session at this time.